All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Finance and Operations Committee, and it's Tuesday, April 16. And it's 4:00 PM, which is unbelievably early for our board meeting, but we lingered eventually. So I don't, I think it's 4:10 now. So, okay, so let's begin.
Do you have to call a roll?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You have to call a roll. So I am here. Mr. Flaffey?
Present.
Ms. Daniels-Louis, here. And Mr. Dan Donovan is here, and also some people who are going to present to us about the Led Street Boys and Girls Club playground plans. If you guys could introduce yourselves before you begin talking.
Great. Chaz Miller, principal of Led Street.
Chaz Mills, teacher of Led Street.
I'm Craig Fitzgerald, the executive director at the Boys and Girls Club.
And I'm Ashley Fidella, senior director of club operations at the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. Thanks for being here tonight.
All right. First of all, thank you all for having us here and taking the time to listen to this. We are super, super excited about this partnership. And I want to say, you know, express my gratitude to, you know, the Boys and Girls Club and for their vision and their passion and their sight with understanding how partnerships within a community can make something dynamic happen. So I am just super excited that we're here to do this and appreciate the time. This is our first time kind of putting this out here to everybody. So really excited about what we're going to be talking to you about. We want to set a framework for it, kind of a context. So we're going to show you a video. So as we talk about the playground and what we're envisioning, we wanted to give you this video of what the actual playground would look like, and so you can kind of have a good idea there. So as you can see, it's extensive, and it has a kindergarten through second grade side, grade three through five side, and then in the back of it will have an altar field to play soccer and things like that. So we'll talk to you in a minute about where that's located on campus, but wanted to give you, because sometimes depending on, you know, kind of what playgrounds we've seen in the past, if we say we're going to build a new playground, we wanted to make sure you knew kind of what playgrounds look like these days, and they're pretty spectacular. So the reasoning behind what we're doing is important. And as you can see, these are two pictures of the Led playgrounds. Our current playground is up to safety standards and all that, but it could be much, much better because it is currently outdated. A lot of the equipment is upwards of 20 to 30 years old. It's very small, and it does not designate between K-2 kindergarten through second grade or three through five. It's not handicap accessible, and it's extremely close to the road. So as you see that house in the background on that first picture, that's actually where the road is. So the new playground area that we are looking at sets it to a different spot, and we'll be coming back to that in just a second.
Hi. I hope you don't mind if I read. I don't want to forget anything, and I'm not used to doing this. So throughout my tenure here in Nashua, especially at Led Street School, I've been there for just about 30 years. I've had a dream of helping to provide Led Street students an opportunity to have a playground that enables them to be kids in a safe manner while also providing excitement and physical activity in their lives. Playground are often overlooked as a setting for youth development and are viewed merely as a fun space. Research suggests that playgrounds provide an environment for children to practice key social, cognitive, and physical skills. I have witnessed some of my students and their families' daily struggles. I have also observed their resilience and their motivation, and I wanted to do everything I could do to help improve their daily lives and education. As Mr. Miller said, the current playground is used by K through three, two through five. There are approximately 460 kids at Led Street School and all. The playground is outdated and small, and it's not handicap accessible, and it definitely lacks age-appropriate equipment. It is extremely close to the road, which can cause some issues, as he said. As you can see in the picture, playing soccer on an all-dirt patch is yet another example of the need for a new playground. So while there are only a few of us here today, we are honored to advocate and represent hundreds of children, parents, teachers, and community, club, club members, and board members who are working hard behind the scenes as well. With this positive and strong collaboration, amazing things are going to be happening. We have started a Led Street approach that requires personal and professional commitment, perseverance, and deep passion that has existed in the classrooms at Led Street School for decades. Proud to say that. Thankfully, we were able to take the next step and form a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and through our teamwork and commitment to the community, we are on a path to fulfilling the dreams of so many. Thank you.
And we in the previous slide talked about building something, and we're not only building a place space, but we're building some things figuratively in the community, whether it's building partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club and things like that, or partnerships with the community and allowing the Led community to have this great space to come together in a positive way. You know, there's so many things that are being built, not just the physical structure itself. And the story of how this came about is important. And when we talked as a team, we thought that there may be others that want to look at this story and think, wow, I have a school, and I have these organizations that are near us. Maybe we can partner together too. And so we wanted to tell this story a bit, and so that people would know this is how this all came about, and so, and how our paths really converged, which I think is very unique. So the path we've taken at Led is the insides of the school, where our instruction takes place. All of our instruction is aligned with how the brain learns. We've been working for about six years on that. So in our classrooms, you see very specific things, like kids talking and working collaboratively together. You see a lot of social-emotional learning that has the purpose of making sure kids are highly engaged in their learning. All those great things are going on in the inside. And it was Michelle who came to me, as we talked about this a couple of years ago, and said, "Chaz, wouldn't it be great if the outside of the school matched the inside of the school?" And it was this aha moment, just, and I said to Michelle, that just resonated with me. And so this is all a part of the story, and for me, it was that beginning of the outside of the school needs to match the inside. We need to be able to work on the outside, same things we're working on on the inside. So we started off, first, just talking to some experts, and as Michelle and I thought about, can this really even be done? We ended up talking to some city officials, the NSD lawyer, to see about, you know, can we have, you know, these grounds, are they ours? Because it's a field in the backup, ball field, and we'll show you that in a minute. But understanding, you know, is that even ours? Can we even, you know, use that? Can we even ask to use it for this? We talked with playground experts to see, you know, is this of grade to use, and are there any special geographical things that need to be taken into consideration? And then after that, when we kind of, every step we took was like, okay, let's take another step, and take another step. We ended up getting to a point where we had a vision put together, and we distributed the, we distributed surveys, because this isn't a playground for the four of us, it's a playground for our community. So we ended up surveying the students, hundreds of students at our school filled out a survey, including kindergarteners and very young kids, staff members, our 75 staff members filled it out, and then a little over 100 parents filled out surveys. And from that, that whole presentation that you saw at the very beginning, that is their vision. So we used there, and you can see in the corners some of what the kids wanted and what they drew as their perfect playground. So we took all of that data and all that information, and we thought, this is, you know, this is how we can put this together. You know, there's some unique and special partnerships that are coming about because of this as well. So, and it's not just us partnering with an amazing organization, with an amazing leaders next door in the Boys and Girls Club, but also, as Michelle is the teacher union rep in our building, and as the administrator, for us, you know, as teacher leader and as building leader, to come together for the good of the community and the good of the school, it's been great for us to continue down this road. And I think so much good comes when leaders of schools and school systems and organizations come together. I mean, amazing things can happen such as this.
Great, thank you. And so like at number three, we got the initial price, because that was the goal, let's build it and see from there, because we really wanted people to have our vision, the vision the kids had. We got the initial budget. We were like, okay, so how do we move forward? And so we're able to establish some initial donations by setting up a Led Street School store and an online donation platform with My School Bucks. I just want to take a second to say that we are definitely extremely thankful to everyone who met with us and made initial donations to our playground. We would often get, you know, a dollar donation from My School Bucks, and although we knew the process would take years, that would not stop us from moving forward. So we both knew this is going, before we were able to align with the Boys and Girls Club, we knew, okay, this is going to take us a while, but that's okay, we're going to persevere, because it's, we're very passionate about it in schools as well. After meeting and discussing playground ideas, options, and pricing with multiple vendors, so we had multiple vendors come out, give us different prices, we gave them all the reasons of the equipment, why, what the kids were looking for, what staff was looking for, how we wanted it to be designed, how by putting it in, the equipment in specific places, it would open up even our scheduling to be able to have two recesses at one time. And after we met with different vendors, we partnered with Joel St. Pierre for Landscape Structures. And Joel has worked on other playground projects in Nashua. He's developed a positive partnership with the Nashua School District. Joel helped connect the data we received on the survey to match the equipment our students, staff expressed to bring our vision to fruition. Joel was really essential in a lot of ways, because he saw our vision, and he believed in the vision, and it was nice to have that optimism, even though the price tag was going to be quite big. So that is kind of how we said, okay. And then we've vouchedered and kind of made our way, and now who can we talk to, and what's our next step to raise the money now that we know what we need to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. So the path that the club has taken started well over a year ago, when we started soliciting information from thought leaders, both locally and nationally. We wanted to get as much information as possible about the needs of youth kind of growing up in society today, as well as specifically the youth here in Nashua. To do so, we worked with leaders from the Nashua School District, other nonprofit executives, and then Subjects Matter experts in their respective fields. During these conversations, what really bubbled up was the need for affordable childcare, access to mental health, to youth mental health services, to include prevention programming and individual counseling services, as well as education and academic support to build upon what is already happening inside the school district. Taking all of this information into account, we then developed a multi-year strategic plan. Prior to the strategic plan, at the club, we only served school-aged youth, meaning kindergarten through 12 graders. Today, we're currently serving youth as young as six weeks old, and we have grown our state licensed childcare program from 60 youth to 148 youth. We're continuing to expand our youth mental health services through our own staff and our own programs, as well as other local partnerships with Greater Nashua Mental Health and other mental health agencies. Lastly, we're continuing to expand programs offered surrounding academics and education. We recently renovated a space within the club to create a dedicated state-of-the-art STEM lab, so that STEM lab will be used by all school-aged youth, and will have 3D printing programs, digital arts, Lego robotics, and more. That investment was over $100,000 on the club's end. In October of last year, we quietly launched a capital campaign with the goal of raising $10 million. The capital campaign is going to address updating building systems and structure to include our roof, gym floor, HVAC systems, addressing some drainage issues surrounding the club, and applying lessons learned from the past few years. We knew that another focus of the capital campaign had to be expanding our outdoor and open air spaces for club members to have access to, both after school as well as during summer. Thanks to our very generous and dedicated supporters, since October, we have raised over $6 million, so in the past five months. We are neighbors with Led Street School, and we serve many of the same youth and same families, so it just makes sense for us to partner on a project like this, given the shared vision we have for the youth we serve. At the end of the day, they're not just Led Street kids, they're not just Boys and Girls Club kids. They're our kids, and all of us believing in them and wanting them to have the opportunities to be successful is what has made this partnership so strong. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see that we listed some additional focuses of our capital campaign, just so you have context on kind of what we're looking to achieve and address. But the focus of today's conversation is honestly the outdoor open air spaces, specifically the playground. And Craig will talk about our partnership and how the project will address those areas.
Great, thanks, Ashley. And the reason why we gave you that background was because we feel like, yes, we're building a playground, but the success of this really stems from aligned mission, aligned core values. And at the end of the day, if you were to look at our organizations from the sky, we're literally attached at the hip. We serve the same kids, same community. Most of the children that we serve come from lower-income families, and the needs are greater than some of their peers across other areas of the city, and we want them to have best-in-class opportunities, just like their peers. It's interesting to see kind of the flight path, if you will, that Led Street School is on, and the flight path that we're on, and that nod in this slide represents us coming together with two primary objectives, is one, to maximize youth impact. Let's give them the best quality playground, the best quality outdoor experiential learning we can, but let's drive down costs and stretch that donor dollar by working together. That's the goal of this initiative. And so when we think about funding for the project, you know, I've met with the mayor's office, as, you know, Chaz and Michelle said, they've met with several folks. We have confirmed that it's owned by the city but managed and operated by the school district. At the end of the day, the mayor's office has said that it comes down to a school board decision on the usage of the land. And so that's why we're here today. The idea here is, in terms of funding for the project, Led Street School and by extension the Nashua School District would provide the land needed for the playground. And we have a later slide, and I think you have it in front of you, that shows exactly the footprint we're talking about. The Boys and Girls Club will provide all the funding necessary for the playground equipment, which is $400,000 to $420,000, as well as all the civil engineering assessment. We have already secured those funds through generous donors. We understand that there's policies and procedures that the school board would need to follow in order to, you know, vet some of those donors. We've done that vetting ourselves, and we're happy to do that at the appropriate time in the future. The follow-on funding, which would get us to the total cost, we already have line of sight to several grants that are focused on outdoor education, that are focused on joint partnerships, that are focused on community revitalization. And our plan, we have a staff of, we have a grant writer, it's actually my wife, on our, on our team, who's going to be working side by side with the Led Street folks in order to do joint grant applications to those folks, and we do feel confident that we'll be able to acquire those grants, hopefully, within a reasonable timeline. The last piece is, is that the school district will not be asked to fund any portion of the playground. I'll repeat that. The school district will not be asked to fund any portion of the playground. The individuals that you see in front of you, backed by several dozens of other people that are working hard on this initiative, we will work through grants and outreach and stewardship to try to raise those funds. The full playground budget is outlined on another slide. In terms of usage of the space, again, along the lines of trying to maximize benefits of the community, Led Street School obviously have full access to both of the playground age groups, as well as the multi-use, we're calling it a, you know, a soccer field, but really it's going to be a multi-use field, think flag football, think, you know, a number of, you know, soccer, a bunch of different sports that the kids can play on a turf sport. They'll have full access to everything you see on the diagram in front of you during school hours. After school, we actually have at the club, behind the Boys and Girls Club, a playground that's dedicated to toddlers. We're actually adapting it to be more age-appropriate for some of the younger kids that we're now serving. So we really don't need the K-2 playground, and we know that they run some after-school activities, so what we've aligned on tentatively is, is we would have access to the older playground, and they would have access to the younger playground, and then we would have first right of access to the multi-use field after school. But then again, we're not just building a playground, we're strengthening our partnership. Obviously, we would work together on a, on an iterative basis to make sure that we're maximizing. If we're not using the multi-use field, Les Street should obviously have full access to it. And so we'll work on an MOU or an LOA that allows us to more clearly define that. And then also, we would like to have access to that during the summer. Now, the big thing, talk about community impact, is we want to make sure that as many people as possible, we see children on the weekend, children, you know, in the later hours of the evening, especially in the summertime, walking around all the time. We want them to be able to have access to this, so when both Led Street School and the Boys and Girls Club are not in operation, then we would open that to the public. And so that's our tentative plan right now in terms of funding for the project, as well as usage of the space.
You can, if you take a look, this will outline a little bit of where we're thinking things will go. So the school is in the bottom left of that left-side picture. If you look just to the right, you can see the ball field, and then in between the ball field and the school is our actual playground now, and you can see kind of how close it is to the road. We're proposing going all the way into the back, and underneath those squares is a just field that looks like it's grassed over, it's not used by anybody's, but you can see kind of the diamond outline of it. But on the left side will be the multi-use field. The 3-5 will be up towards kind of where we would envision a connection to the Boys and Girls Club, and then the K-2 would be closest to us here, and then as people would walk into this area, there would be an semblance of a walkway made coming down that right side, going back into there. And we have some, you know, grander ideas about what that can look like. But also, I think this, that aerial really does kind of reiterate what Craig is saying, that we are right next to each other, and we have so many supports that can be shared, and we share the same students, and, you know, the same amazing students, and what a powerful partnership it can be if we make it so geographically, we're a little more connected. And so this will really make that a very connected space with our resources. And the other one on the right, that's just the rendering that we have, that we have there.
In terms of the budget, you can see the budget. We, thanks to Michelle and Chaz and team, we have real tight budget on the actual playground equipment. The playground surface makes it handicapped accessible. You know, we could go with a mulch or something along those lines. We want to make sure that it's as handicapped accessible as possible, so we feel like if we're going to do this, let's make the investment for the soft rubber, you know, ground for the kids to make it as safe as possible. And equipment installation, that's been vetted. We actually have onboarded on the club side, because as part of our capital campaign, we've onboarded a civil engineer for multiple projects, this being one of them. Our plan is just to cover that cost and envelope, or basically, we'll cover the cost and we'll envelope kind of the work for this, along with the other civil engineering projects we're doing as part of the broader capital campaign. Some things that this civil engineer is going to help us do is understand what the ground preparation is going to take. Basically, what that means is, is, you know, leveling the ground, putting the initial gravel down that the rubber will sit on, that the rubber will sit on top of, and then making sure it's ready for the actual playground equipment. How it works is, is they get it to gravel-ready, and then they put the equipment in, and then they put the rubber over top of that. And then in terms of the field, you know, if you look at the, if you recall the previous pictures of the playground, and we have a similar issue at the, at the club, we like to use our stuff, and the kids run a lot, and so it's hard to keep the grass going. And so what we're going to do is, is budget out the cost for a turf in order to keep, it'll be more expensive on the front end, but in terms of maintenance down the line, it'll be a lot cheaper. In terms of timeline, we're still evaluating timeline. That'll obviously be dependent on the pace by which we can get the necessary approvals from you all and any other entities that need to have, you know, give approval. And then also, we have our project management committee, and so we would need to clear that through our project management committee on the club side, given the size of the investment. The required next steps are, we want to solidify some of the cost estimates that I mentioned we're still working on. The next thing we would do is, is we'd like to establish a letter of intent between us, meaning the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Nashua, and the, and the school district to move forward. Obviously, the planning and preparation, there's a cost with that in terms of people, time, energy, and as well as dollars, and we want to make sure that we're aligned on the go-forward path. And then also, we'd like to be able to identify who on the school district side would be the appropriate stakeholders to work through, say, a memorandum of understanding, a letter of agreement, as well as a line on, say, insurance and those types of things. And the last piece is, is we really want to kind of look at, okay, it's great to build this, but let's make sure we're situationally aware on what the go-forward costs and what the roles and responsibilities are going to be regarding kind of ongoing maintenance. We want to make sure that's all shored up before we move forward. So again, like, the ask today is, is, you know, we've gotten, we've asked directly from the mayor's office, as well as the superintendent of schools, to say, do we have your overt support for this? And both of them have emphatically said yes. What we're asking for is for this committee's overt support, and then the willingness to give us guidance on what additional information you need for us to then be able to take it to the school board to be able to get the MOUs, the LOAs, and those type things that I just mentioned. So that's our request today, and we're open to any questions you all may have.
Very excited. I have a couple of questions. So there's no initial upfront cost for the district, maintaining and such things. I know that will be determined as we go forward. Well, whose rights and responsibilities will that be? Because that would be important to know.
What I'm, if you don't mind, what I'm hoping is, as I mentioned earlier about identifying stakeholders on either side, like for instance, when it comes to insurance, when it comes to ongoing maintenance, there are certain select stakeholders on our side that normally do that. It all falls under Ashley, and I'm sure there are certain select stakeholders on your side. Our hope is, is that coming out of this meeting, we can get a short list of questions like that that you have. We can bring together the stakeholders from both sides, get a definitive answer, and then at a future state meeting in the near future, hopefully, be able to come to you and say, this is the plan we have based on your questions.
And I guess I would say, what does Mr. Donovan think?
Well, we had had a previous discussion. I think this makes a lot of sense. The partnership is wonderful. As far as what we'd need to do is MOUs, I mean, the insurance, we'll work with the city on that, because our insurance is through the city. Repairs in the future, that has to be decided. We've talked about that. And, you know, with the union environment that we have, there may be a few things that we need to sort of pass through that process to get this done. I certainly don't think a project of this size will have any issue with that. But those are just some of the things off the top of my head we probably need to do. And I think the city also said, as far as the piece of land, any, if you're going to start taking down some trees and things like that, it's, it's the Board of Education's land, so to speak, but we probably just want to keep them in the loop, because it's not, we're not just putting a Because it's not, we're not just putting a playground where we have an existing one, we're making an extensive improvement behind. It might require taking down some trees, it might require more than we would typically put in place for, for another playground.
Like, my hope would be, like, again, coming out of this meeting, you know, we'll, we'll work with Dan, work with whoever you select, we'll identify those stakeholders from us, from you, from the city, come together as a team, and just literally go line item by line item. Insurance, let's, you know, let's confirm the usage, let's confirm, you know, the, what we think, you know, let's come up with a rough order of magnitude or an estimate in terms of what go-forward maintenance costs are going to be. What are the activities related to that? What are our initial thoughts on that? And then from there, we can bring it back to you all, so.
I was wondering, I, I don't believe that the school district has done, had this kind of partnership before, but has the Boys and Girls Club done this in other locations? Similar, similar kinds of collaboration?
For, for our club, I've only been in my role for three years. So in the three years we've been here, this would be the largest partnership. There are other organizations that serve as a, as a point of reference for this being a successful venture. I am meeting with members of Boys and Girls Club of America, and my hope is, is to be able to, you know, identify other, other partnerships that have done similar stuff, so we can reach out to them and, and capture lessons learned as we move forward with this process, so.
The things that I was thinking of as you guys were speaking is that it seems like you've been working so closely together and really enjoy working together, and it made me kind of, you know, I, I don't want it to be so personality-driven, that if someone else stepped into one of your roles, that things kind of fall apart. I don't know how you guys are going to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, and that's, that's a really good question. I, I think we are really truly representative of all of our stakeholders, all the kids, all the community that, you know, Boys and Girls Club has at their, at their organization. So I think if anyone stepped in, we've kind of made it so that it's not kind of the four of us, and, you know, having this vision, but developing that vision of what everybody else sees and feels. And I think that's been just a great opportunity for us, and I know a, a great experience for me as principal, to have so many voices involved in this, and so much shared leadership that I think if anybody was to step in, hopefully not, but if anybody was to step in, then it would be something where it would just kind of be assimilated to what everybody is driving, because we're really a conduit more than anything. We're a keeper of a vision rather than a vision. So it, it kind of helps us to be, you know, even though we all have personalities, I think it, it helps us being the keeper of that vision, and so whoever steps in will also be the keeper of that vision, too, so.
Okay.
And too, like, for both the, the capital campaign at the club, as well as this project specifically, you know, we have a really amazing board at the club that has, you know, a sustainability and continuity plan in place for this particular project. You know, we take in folks that have, you know, done really well in business and, you know, managing multimillioning, in some cases, billion-dollar projects, you know, at some of the larger firms in the area, and they've come on board as part of a project management committee. And we've done that intentionally to make sure that, you know, given their skills and expertise, we'll really be able to make sure that we deliver this on time and on budget. But also, you know, it's not, if, if I, I'm told to be saying, I always say the phrase, if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, but I was told I should say if I win the lottery tomorrow, because it's more positive. But, you know, if I win the lottery tomorrow, you know, we have a really amazing board and, and a continuity plan in place to make sure things like this, you know, go on in perpetuity.
I know, this, the school district doesn't envision making any big plans, any big changes to the Led Street, right? I mean, it's not...
No, I mean, this, this piece of land they're using has been sitting there as an old ball field for a long time.
Yeah, okay.
I think if, I take a walk occasionally through the woods, there's a path at the Boy Scout, and you come out there, and you're, there's not much there. I think this would be a much better use of the, of the...
Yeah, it's great that the space is already there. I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason, I mean, it would be nice to present this to the full board. Do we need, like, a motion to do that, or do we, I mean, do you guys have any, any hesitation?
Your presentation's so comprehensive, and you want, I can't think of many, I can't think of other issues that you would bring to the full board, because I think you've answered. I don't know, you could, maybe you can think of, but there's no butters, there's nobody who can complain about the construction.
No, I, I think from that point of view, we've spoken to the city, I think, I think we're fine. You know, I think, as Craig said, the, you know, the next steps, sort of putting the MOUs together to say, okay, after all, the work is done and we get started, how do we deal with it going forward? Does the board want to see that before they put their full stamp on it? So I guess the question is, would you like this group to come to a full board meeting, lay it out, then if there are some other questions, then all nine of you soon can get back.
Oh, yes, that, that would be great, because it, it is, it's so like, I haven't seen anything like this before, and it's so exciting, and I think it'd be great to have the other board members hear from you what you have in mind, and hear the excitement that you all share. So yeah, I, I don't know, can we schedule something for them?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we'll pass it on to Tara, and she's the scheduler of all things, right?
Okay.
Can I just ask one, one question? The only, the only question I have, I was wondering, while we have the principal here, the Led Street after-school program, does it have third through fifth graders, too?
Yeah, we have a 21st century program there, yes.
So I was just wondering, they can't, they won't be able to use the playground, right?
It depends, it depends on what parts of the playground, and we're going to work out that thing, but I'm thinking there are, they, they'll have kids running the spectrum of K-five. So it might be that if we are going to share or use, just as thinking off the top of my head, if we're sharing it, and it is a time where Boys and Girls Club really needs it during that time, and it's their shared use, we could have three-five use, the multi-use part, while the three-five playground is actually being used there. So there are different ways that we could, we could definitely manipulate the space pretty easily.
I actually worked the after-school program, and so that's exactly what we were thinking. The playground is very much, although it's K to two and three to five, there are a lot of similarities. There's a zip line and a couple of things like that. And so we have, we would close that for the Boys and Girls Club. However, the other side, the, the K to two side, we feel comfortable that the kids in four and five will love that space as well. So that's most likely where we would have them.
I understand, so, you know what, I'm rereading, and it says that the after-school students will have relaxed as to the K through two portion. So, thank you, that's it.
Go ahead, Sean. So, and I had a couple of questions. Okay, so now, we're funding this as a joint project. Is this a gift to the Nashua School District? Like, how does it separate, like, let's just say, the, the Boys and Girls Club is strong and spectacular, and I love the program, but let's just say that you guys decide that you no longer want to run sports anymore, that you're going to focus more on mental health, you're going to focus on more stuff internally inside the building. Now, who does this playground belong to?
I, I think as part of the MO, I, I can't answer that question right this moment, but I think as part of the build-out or the MOU and the LOA, we would, you know, bring together the right people to think through as many situations as possible and outline, you know, you know, what, what would be the decision, either what would be the decision and/or what would be the process to come to a decision if that instance were ever happened. Dan?
Partially, it seems like this is spectacular, I love the idea, but it's also losing a piece of land that we don't use. I do understand that. But a piece of the school's land that we don't use, that's for the community. And if we, like, I love the idea, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm just thinking, like, going forward in 30 years, when none of us are no longer sitting here, all, all of us, what happens to this land in that aspect? I, you know, those are the, like, type of questions you said, like, to ask, and those are, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Like, do we lose, how about if we don't, no longer have a Led Street? Have we lost this land to the Boys and Girls Club? Like, how does, how does this work going towards that? Because that would be important, and probably above us.
Well, yes, and I think the answer is we get legal if the city involved. I can answer that as a guess, but I'll, I'll let the lawyers answer it. But I, I believe the land itself will stay with the school district. If the school district closes ledge for some reason, 30 years from now, then the land reverts back to the city. So the structures on the land, if the Boys and Girls Club are no longer interested, would then sort of revert back to the city, is how I would see that probably happening.
Spectacular answer.
Hey, Joanne, this question made me think of something else. I mean, it was, the, with the Boys and Girls Club using one side of the playground and the after-school program using the other side, I don't know where those kids are in different programs. How would that work to make sure that they're, like, separated or not separated, or I...
It, it doesn't show it on the video, but we have fencing involved, and so the playgrounds would be fenced off, so it would be the K to two fencing, and then the three to five fencing, but would give us access to open up the fencing, so it would be closed during the school day as far as, so the two recesses can go on. And then that space would be closed off for the Boys and Girls Club, specifically for your kids at that program. So the fencing isn't in there, but there's going to be fencing that will...
Is it a, is it movable fence, or is it fenced with, like, gates in it?
So, we have, we, we are, we're still looking to see some of the fences that, like, they can open, they're gated, they can open up, and he'll open access, close, so something along that line, so there'd be some flexibility if we're going to open that, that space.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do we need a motion?
Recommendation to approve?
I mean, I think to move, yeah, maybe recommendation to move forward this presentation to the full board, that's probably the first step you'd want to do, I'm guessing.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a move to, to move this forward to the entire board. Oh, it's, I'll make a move to approve the Led Street Boys and Girls Playground plans and present them to the full board. Thank you. And I guess, I mean, yes, yes?
Definitely, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I want to say, thank you all so much for your vision and for your support with this, it means everything, and you guys have such great questions. It is, sometimes I feel like we're in a, a dark room with a flashlight, and we can only see so much ahead of us, because this is all very new, I think, this partnering. So I think your questions were great, and we look forward to figuring it out with you all, so thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll have Tara reach out to you, Chaz, and figure out what, what evening the four of you can make it, or three out of the four, or whatever you want to do. Thanks.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so, so next we have our athletic director, Elise Gengres, is going to present on a, a contract between Performance Rehab Incorporated and the National Hampshire School District.
Hi, everybody, I believe you have a copy of the contract, correct, in your packet? Okay. So just to fill in everybody in, this contract between the National School District and Performance Rehab is for our athletic training services at the high school level. And just so you know, I have my notes in my phone today, so not ignore you. So it, in the contract, it's the same contract that the National School District has had with Performance Rehab for more than 30 years. They started working with the school district in 1989, so we've been working with them. The contract specifies that our Performance Rehab will provide an athletic trainer to provide services for 20 hours per week at our, each of our high schools. And I can tell you that each of our athletic trainers puts in far more than that. It also provides us opportunities to have per diem coverage, so if there's multiple events going on at multiple different facilities, that we have access to additional staff of Performance Rehab who will provide additional coverage for us. As well as, in addition to that, the athletic trainers and Performance Rehab, they also gain us access for our varsity football games. We have an orthopedic surgeon on the sidelines with us at all times at our home games. So that's a, a benefit not only to our own students, but to any other varsity football player that may get injured at one of our home games. So that's in there. Our athletic trainers evaluate athletic injuries, they follow up with the students and the parents, they're in constant communication about that. They treat, and they also help provide some rehab for our student athletes in our schools, rather than students having to go out as part of the, it's not necessarily part of the contract, but one of the other things that they do, that they help us with, is our athletic trainers will also consult with our neuropsychologist, our clinical neuropsychologist who reads all our impact testing and helps make, consults on any of our students who have head injuries. So that's another benefit that's in there. One of the other things that they do is they often bring in student interns, students who may be interested in the field of athletic training or physical therapy or things like that. They'll also come in and work with our athletic trainers, and it's just pretty much the same contract that you've seen. The biggest changes are obviously the cost per year. The, the first year illustrates a 4% increase over this year, and then the following two years are a 3.5% increase, which is in line, and, and obviously, we would love to give them more for everything that they do, but that's where we're at. And then the other change in this contract compared to the last three-year contract is Exhibit C, I believe, number four, where we just updated the language to the previous contract, talked about language, about having medical records for students and things like that, and they would be housed in the athletic training office, et cetera, et cetera. And we just updated the language to represent that we do online registration, and that's how we collect all our medical forms. So it's not a huge change in our practice, we just updated the contract to reflect what we're doing.
Okay. It seems pretty straightforward. Ms. Daniels Williams?
Um, so you said this is so that we can play varsity?
No, so our athletic training, the athletic, the contract is with a company to provide our athletic training staff, certified athletic trainers. We are by NHIA bylaws, we are a mem, our two high schools are members of the NHIAA, and one of the requirements is we have to have medical coverage at all of our varsity events. That's part of, I mean, that's just safety and security and liability and risk management and all of those things. So this contract, rather than the Nashville School District hiring our own athletic trainers, we contract with a company who provides them for us.
Is it usually the same person that works with the, the kids on a regular basis, or are there just...
Yes, yep. So right now, we have someone who is at North, her name's Elise Murphy, and we have David Baylot, who is at Nashua South, so it's usually somebody at North, somebody at South, and they're there all the time after school, working with our kids. During preseason, they'll be at a lot of our practices, but usually, once events start, they're only at games.
How do you decide which games they're going to go to if there's more than...
Based on the risk, based on the risk. So obviously, in the fall, football takes top priority. In the spring, boys lacrosse takes top priority, that's a pretty contact sport, sometimes almost as contact and tackle as football can be at times. So we look at what's going on at each day and what has the highest risk level.
Okay. All right, do you have any questions?
Um, so I think that our sports are doing spectacular, we're doing great. Do, did we get any other bids from other companies?
We did not.
Okay.
We have not. This is, again, this is the company that we've contracted with for 35 years.
Okay, okay.
It's amazing, too, that for, we get, for the $64,000, we get two people that are there doing, and they're putting in more than, more than 20 hours each, you said, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
This, this company's not making money on this from this point of view? They also have other things they do, so there's some linkage and things like that, but on this specific contract, they're losing money, they're not necessarily making money.
Okay, all right, okay, so if there's no other questions...
I just wanted to say one, that because I'm friends with the owner, and I've been a patient or a client, I'm just going to abstain.
Okay, understandable.
Okay, so, yeah... Okay, so, yeah, me and you. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract between Performance Rehab, Inc., uh, and the National New Hampshire School District at the high schools for the 2024, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27 school year sport seasons as presented.
I second that motion.
Thank you. And I may yes?
Um, yes.
Okay, then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today. It's nice to see you. The next item on the agenda is the, um, food service purchases?
Yes. Um, so the Food Service Fund, um, has a significant sum of money in it because of the year where there were, there was free food, um, just after the COVID year. So the balance in that fund built up, uh, to a point that the state requires that we work on spending that down. So what we're doing is we're buying new equipment in the kitchens that need it. One of the other things, um, that the Food Service Group would like to do is, is get a, a printer in each one of the, uh, kitchens to deal with the invoices, if they're going to do any sort of menus or this or that. Right now, two, the two high schools, I think, might have a printer. The other ones have to then run into the school to get, get the printer. So we reached out, we currently have a contract with a company called SPC. Uh, that's where all our copiers and printers come from. Um, so since we have that contract in place with them, we reached out and said, okay, can we purchase these? We'll use the food service funds. We won't use the regular contract, uh, funds, but we'll get the same pricing. And then they will take care of these, just like they take care of all the other ones.
So they'll provide the ink and all that stuff?
Exactly. Everything but the paper.
Okay, and, um, so there, it, there would be any extra cost to the district? It'd all come from the food service budget?
Yes, exactly.
Um, I, I just, out of curiosity, um, because I know that we have a problem with like, um, with unpaid lunches and stuff. Um, and, uh, could this money be used for something like that?
No, there's, um, unpaid lunches cannot be covered by the food service funding. That's a federal law. So, um, if we, if, at the end of each school year, if we have unpaid lunches, then we cover that with some money that we, from the operating budget. And that's just the, the rule. They don't allow you, I, I don't know why, but they don't allow you to sort of, let's say, revenue or profits that you've generated in your food service to use it to pay off student debt. They're very clear about that.
What other things can we use it for other than printers?
Well, we're buying a number of, uh, sort of new stoves and ovens and things like that and repairs and, and to get those, uh, get those items placed in the kitchens. So that's what the number one goal is right now, to spend on those. We also spent some of it on the Franklin Street Kitchen. That's a new kitchen, so we bought a, a number of items for that. So they're fairly, you know, it's interesting. You can only have the average, in the long run, you have to get to the point where the amount, the balance you can have at the end of any given year is three months' revenue. So let's say if your revenue is $100,000, you can have at the end of the year $300,000. Any more than that, they suggest you send a spend-down plan. So this is our second year that we're working on a, on a spend-down plan. Because the balance we had in my example, if the max was 300, it was, let's say, over a million. So it takes some time to actually spend it down.
Um, would this be enough to spend it down to the amount that you need?
This is just one step as part of the process. There's more, there'll be more things coming forward for the equipment.
Okay, um...
This was just, because this is with a different vendor. You don't have to do a lot of homework. It's just, here's the printer we wanted and then we got the quote.
So there's, um, there's nothing, there's nothing pressing that you could, I mean, because, you know, to look at this and say, it would be nice to have printers in all the cafeterias, but it doesn't really seem like it's necessary. Um, but at the same time, if we need to spend the money and we've already bought all the things that we can, like, really buy, um, then, you know, we should give the food service staff what they want, so...
Yeah, that's, that's how I look at it. This isn't like a, a must, you can't run the kitchens without them. Yeah, you can run the kitchens without them. This is a nice-to-have. But since they have the funds and the funds have to be used specifically for food service, then let's give them a nice-to-have. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's their money. Uh, we can't use it for anything else.
Right.
Um, so I, I think that I, 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 you know, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I just say?
Yeah.
Um, is there any chance that other staff could use the, the printer, the copier that they have? And I ask that as someone who waited. We had 30, I'm guessing it was 30 people. We had one copier, one printer for the entire academy. We also had ELL, who had to run off books.
Well, this will be...
I, I just don't remember any print. When I went to the cafeteria at South, I don't remember getting a menu or anything. So I just, I wonder whether it would be possible for other people to use the printers that are there.
I'm sure it would be during the day while they're there.
That's what I'm...
As long as they link it up to the network, then it could be a choice you could make.
So how would we ensure that that access would exist?
Through IT could handle that. So when we get the printers in, we can just make that printer one of the options that people, let's say in the high schools, that are near the cafeteria could use.
Would we have them at the full meeting, by any chance?
Service people?
Or, or the IT? I just, I just don't know that I could support this unless I knew that it was being utilized fully.
Well, we could, I mean, I could cert-, I don't, it's not a big issue, it's not a big deal at all, adding a printer to your printer choices. That's very easy to do. So we could definitely do that.
Um, can, can I make a motion to delay the vote till after the food service meeting? And see what they need?
Service meeting?
Yeah, like, you know, with the people that need the...
I'm going to, I'm going to, if, if we could hear them, if we could hear them, I'm going to send it to the full board and ask the question that I'm asking now or have somebody else ask those questions about sharing them.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, you can, you can make a motion to approve it and say with the, with the inclusion of, um, access to other parties in, in the school.
Okay, can you write that into the motion, Neil? Uh, Mr. Claffey, sorry. Um, okay, so...
Okay, I, um, move that we approve the purchase lease of 16 printers, copiers for 16 school cafeteria from Specialized Purchasing Consultants Corporation in an amount not to exceed $18,840, but the understanding that other school staff would have access to this equipment during the school day.
Second. Okay, so I guess we should vote. Um, I may yes? Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right then. Great. So the next thing is the crossing guard update. You can go ahead.
Okay, so for the first time in a long time, we have a little good news on the crossing guard update. Um, it's been a struggle, it was a struggle before COVID, but since COVID, it's been a, a greater struggle. But if you recall back, I think, was it in the spring of last year? Um, the way the crossing guards are paid is they were getting paid per shift. And their shift might be a half hour in the morning and a half hour in the afternoon. So the, the rate was 17 something per hour, which was reasonable for that. The people said, at a half hour pop, I'm, I'm going there and I'm, I'm making like $8, $8.50. It doesn't make any sense. So a lot of people were, were backing off from, from taking the shifts. So we discussed and we decided to, well, why do we make each shift minimum of an hour? So there, I don't think there are any crossing guard posts that are more than an hour. Some are 30 minutes, some are 40, some are 45. So, but now they'll get paid for an hour. If they show up and do their crossing guard post, whether it's 20 minutes or anything less than an hour, they'll get paid for the full hour. So with that, um, we have been able to sort of in, to increase the number of, of, um, posts. Um, Chris Lassard, who's the, uh, security and, uh, person works through Plan Ops Operations, um, he had 19 vacancies, um, and today we're down to 10. And that's just over, you know, probably about a six-month period. So that's a tremendous increase based on where we were before. We'd go up and down one or two. Um, we do have a substitute program, but a lot of people don't even want to do that. Um, so this step has, uh, moved in the right direction. Obviously, safety is very important. We'd like to have these filled all the time. Um, but, uh, it has improved. Some people are also filling more than one post. So they can move from an early post to then a later post and do the same thing in the afternoon. So, uh, that's where we've also picked up some staff. So we're hoping that over time, uh, we can get closer to the 100%. I don't know if we'll ever get 100%, but, um, this is just a, an update. We usually give you one of these in the fall when we first start and say, here's where we're going. And then we give one later on in the year like now. So, uh, any questions or...
Um, how much do we pay the crossing guards?
17 something an hour.
Um, I mean, they don't work that many hours.
Right.
I mean, right now, we were able to get, fill all these vacancies because we work over them an hour pay instead of a half an hour. They're not contracted, right?
No, they're, um, they're just non-affiliated people. Most of them are older people just doing this.
I mean, could we get more of them if we paid them a little bit more?
Well, this seemed to work. We paid more before and it didn't work. Now, they're, they're making more now because they're getting the full hours pay.
Okay.
Um, but any raise you're going to give to them, you're going to, that would be discussed when you're giving raises to all the other groups.
Okay. Um, now, like, so some of these, um, some of these crossing spots aren't covered. There's no pedestrian crossing signals. Um, how does that work out? Are there, have there been any incidents or the, at these...
There, there haven't been, luckily enough. Um, a lot of these posts, there's enough students that we try to have somebody there, but a lot of times there aren't that, that many students. We did have, the last time we had an incident, um, one of the crossing guards got hit and it was over near, um, Arlington Street area, near Dr. Crisp. Um, that happened about a year and a half, year, year or so ago. Um, but we haven't had a student get hit in a long time. There was some incident at Elm Street a couple of years ago. Um, but I think that's where kids were sort of cutting in between cars. They weren't crossing where they were supposed to. Had we had a crossing guard, it might have made it better, but, um, no, Chris Lassard, if he has subs, he puts them in what he thinks are the most dangerous areas.
Okay. Um, I was kind of wondering, um, I know that the crossing guards are probably more, use more downtown than they are anywhere else because, of course, these are schools that don't have buses. Um, could, could we maybe see where we have crossing guards and where we don't so we can make sure that we feel like they're spread out equitably across the district?
I can get you the list, sure. I can, I can get you a list of the posts and which ones are currently filled, sure.
Okay. But any questions? Okay, all right, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, though. I'm glad that we have more.
Yes. So next is the credit card?
Okay, credit card report, um, each quarter. I'm just supposed to bring forward, uh, the spending on the credit card. So, um, what you have in front of you, you have two years, two full calendar years, 2022 and 2023. Um, and then going forward, we'll, we'll update it on a, on a true quarterly basis. So we'll have in May, we can have the first quarter of the year. So, but just looking at it quickly, in 2022, we spent 40, $40,000 to $41,000 on the credit card. And there were mainly three line items, three types of expenses, um, that we use the credit card for. It, and those are the, um, travel, conferences and seminars. And then there's a software that we buy using the credit card. So if you just stop to think, any sort of travel or, or seminar or things like that, you really have to use a credit card today. There's, you know, that's really the only way to do it. So we don't have a lot of that expense in the district, but when we do, this is what we use the card for. The card is, we just have one card. It's in my name. It's kept in the safe every night. Someone wants to use it, they check with me, I say yes. And then I have someone that works, works in the district, uh, that manages all the paperwork behind it. So, but, and so in 2022, 72% of the spend was on travel, conferences and seminars, and then that software.
Okay.
So when you flip to 2023, it's $69,000 spent, so that's a higher number. Um, but once, when you take those three accounts, again, the travel, the conferences and seminars and the software, that's like 63%. So once again, it shows we're using it for the same types of things. There was, um, a miscellaneous equipment line item for $6,800, which if you added that in, that would get you to sort of the 73% that we had spent the previous year. Um, and that was for a purchase where Plan Ops was looking for a piece to repair something. They couldn't find it anywhere except online. And that company required that we use a credit card to purchase it. So most of our purchases, we go through the same process. It's a purchase order process. That purchase order process is tied to our budgeting. You can't spend money if you don't have it in the line item. Thus the reason that we want to do the spend that way wherever we can. But in today's world, you do need a credit card and that's what we do.
Um, when you pay the credit card, where, where are the budgets come out of?
Depends on what the line item is. It's depend on who's using it. So if a school is using the credit card to go to a conference, then we get charged to that school's conference line.
Okay.
So it's all over the place.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
So this, um, this past quarter, you'll present to us?
Yeah.
You have to tally up the, all the stuff and...
Yeah, the, like, the March bill isn't in yet.
I was just, we've already seen three quarters, right? We just hadn't seen the last quarter, so this is all...
Right.
And then I just, I just wanted, having paid for a bulb, is there a way to shut off the projector from there? It just, it's a cost issue, which, do you know how much those bulbs are? We're not using it. And I, I don't, Mr. Donovan, I don't mean to make you work overtime, but I know it's...
I don't know how to turn it off.
Get it, I've done it on a chair, but I just...
Oh, excellent.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Shut the lights out, kid. It's a habit I...
Sounds like something Neil had to deal with as a kid, but... So what we'll do is we'll go through this forecast as opposed to number seven, which is the February and March financial reports. This is, this will include all of that.
Oh, excellent.
So, so, big long sheet, you'll get it the next three months. Basically, this is, this, this sheet is another version of what the financial report looks like that we typically go over each month. And what I do is across the top, you can see all the months, July through June. So July through March are actual numbers. So those are all the costs by line incurred for the whole time. April, May and June are estimates that I did, and I can go over a little more detail than that. Then, so you see those three, April through June are estimates. Then there's a summer escrow line, and I'll explain that where there's, there's not too many numbers in there. And then, so my actual year-to-date is the nine months of actuals and the three months of estimates plus the summer estimate. That gives you, so that's what I'm projecting for each one of those lines will be the spend. And there's the next, next line over is encumbrances. That means there's a purchase order there, and so it's holding the funds, it just hasn't, hasn't been spent yet, paid for yet. And then, so the remaining column, that's, that's my guess of how much money is going to be left in each one of these accounts, okay? And then the last two columns are simply a percent of how much you're going to use in that line and then what the budget is as of now. Okay, so as we know, the biggest part of our budget is our salaries and wages. So that first section, those fifty-one hundred accounts are the salaries and wages. We have budgeted ninety-five point four million. My projections at this point say we're going to spend ninety-four point two million of that, so that we'd have a one point one or one point two. If you look at the remaining column, the subtotal for those accounts, one million, one seventy-five. That's what I'm projecting at this point we'll have left over in all the labor accounts. So, but keep in mind, I'm doing estimates for three months in the summer. I have a three-pronged process that I do that, so it's, it's, I'm comfortable with it. I wouldn't bet that the numbers are going to come out exactly like this. I mean, people get paid for different things. There's some costs, with, with this sort of dollars, I don't know every single payment made to every single person, but I've been using this process for a while now and it usually comes out fairly close. And like I said, I have a couple other ways to check these numbers. So I'm fairly comfortable, at least the first run. Like I said, I'll do this every month, and the more I do it, the better it'll get because you'll have another month of actual and you'll just get closer to the final. So it looks like at that point, one point two million. The next set of accounts, the fringe benefits, those accounts are the accounts that are added to our budget by the city, except for the educational assistance line, the other three, the big ones. The city budgets those. They're for our benefits, for our people, they're for our FICA, and so they're really costs associated with the school district employees. But if they, if they're over budget, the city will pick up any cost of over budget. If they're under budget, we don't get to spend the money. The money flows back into the city benefit funds, okay? So when you, when I get to the bottom, I'll, I'll show you some, how that sort of transpires in this process. Okay, then the next set of accounts, the fifty-three, professional and technical services. This one is where, if you look at the bottom line there of, of that section, contracted services account five-three-six-two-eight, you'll see in the summer, you'll see I have eight hundred thousand dollars. That is for, that's the estimate, working with the special ed office manager. The teachers that we don't have, we've gone out and we've got contracted service people. As I said at the budget hearing, that's three to three and a half times the cost of the teacher's salary, not the benefits and salary, but the salary. So if we were to pay a teacher fifty thousand dollars in salary, the cost to have a contracted service would be over a hundred and fifty thousand. So we have to, we've been using these contracted services. So I have in there, I have the four hundred and the eight hundred. That's based upon a year-to-date estimate that the special ed director gave me. So you can see in that line, the remaining, that's a big negative number, right? So what, what, if that in fact turns out to be right, I'm going to use the extra money in labor down there, okay? So I'll move budgeted funds from the labor down to cover that. Because the labor, we have one million, one seventy-five extra, and on, on this set of accounts, we have a minus seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. Okay, so that's, that's the sort of new issue. That's why in the budget for next year, there's a one point five million dollar line item to cover this sort of thing. If we can get all the special ed positions filled, then we'll save a bunch of money. There'll be a lot of money left over at one point five million. My guess is, we're not going to fill them all. That's a pipe dream, and that's why I had to budget it. But when you look at the actuals, you can see, this is, this is where that is all happening, okay? So we've been able to cover it with excess labor. But.
Do you remember how we covered it last year?
We didn't have, we had S R funds.
Oh, okay. Of course, I should have known. That's how we covered everything last year. All right.
If, worst case scenario, you have to use, you, you do spend what, worst case scenario estimate, and you still have a surplus in the, from the one point one, whatever, what happens to the surplus?
That's a decision we can make as, as.
Okay.
Group. When I get to the end, I'll go over that, okay? All right, so those are sort of the, the two areas where most of the, of the money is. The property services line, all those, the fifty, fifty-four accounts I'm showing will probably have about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars left. Most of that is electricity. It looks like we're going to be under budget on electricity this year. And maybe some of that is related to our solar. We'll figure that out when we get to the end of the year, but then again, you know, budgeting electric bill is one of the hardest things you could ever do. So, we'll see how it goes. Each month, we'll see how close that.
Just save that.
There we go. Good, good save. My number, my number will look better. Okay, then the next section, down towards the, the other services, the fifty-five hundred accounts. Now, if you look at that, those accounts, I'm expecting, you know, a couple might run over a little bit, the telephone voice is going to run over. That hasn't been budgeted high enough the last few years. Telephone voice includes not only just all the telephone lines, but also the, the Comcast lines and things for the computer, computer network. So I budgeted that higher for next year. We're putting in a new phone system. We're going to eliminate more lines. So hopefully, that number will finally start going down, but this year, we're going to overrun that line. Most of the other lines in there aren't too bad till you get down to the, to the second last line, the tuition out of district. That's for our special ed students that go out of district. I think I've, we've talked about that before. We have a spreadsheet, student by student. We review it with Sped every six weeks or so. So the number that's in here, the spend on the actual year-to-date column, when you go down right near the bottom there, it's six million, four oh three. That's the expected spend for the out-of-district tuition this year, okay? The budget, which is over on the far right in that last column, is five million, eight ninety-four. So we're going to overrun that account by five hundred thousand this year. That is not, this account has done that a number of times, okay? So it's not shocking to see it. The cost of out-of-district tuition, the, the schools that provide it, their costs have, have skyrocketed. And once the students in that school, then we simply just have to, you know, provide the services. There's reviews done by special ed, et cetera, but, so that's the other account that's going to be higher. Prior to COVID, this account ran over by two to three to four hundred thousand almost every year. I do have a, another reserve account that if it went way over, I could cover it, so it wouldn't affect, we wouldn't be over budget, so to speak. We'd charge some of the overage to that, to that reserve account. I try to keep, I try to use excess within this budget to cover it, and I can probably do that this year. But if it continues to rise, if a new student comes in or something with significant costs, this number could go higher. The chances of it going lower at this point in the year are pretty minimal. But that's, like I said, that's a solid number. It's not that big a concern because this is the account that, when I first started here, was the account that always ran over. It's so hard to estimate. So it's not a great thing that it's going to be five hundred over at this point, but it is what it is. Okay, and then you flip the page over, then you see all the, the supply and materials accounts. These accounts, I'm estimating there'll be about a hundred thousand left. It'll be, it'll be between seventy-five and one twenty-five. It typically is all the time. Each school is given money, each department has money. Some of them spend it down to the last penny, some of it don't. Some of them don't. Sometimes they, you know, they plan to buy something and they don't. So there's usually a little bit of money left. They're not going to overspend on these accounts. So, and then the next one is that one line item, the other expenses, says indirect costs. The thirty-two thousand that I'm showing there, that number will, that's a, that's, that number will probably get better. We're behind in the grant spending because of all the audits that we've had and the grant billing, so we'll be catching up over the next couple of months. That's where this comes in. This comes in as revenue when we bill grants. So the more grants we bill, the more dollars. It's a, it's a percentage of, of the amount you bill. So we're expecting that to get a little better. That's a conservative number in my mind. And then the equipment lines, those look like there'll be a little bit of money left. There usually is, so I'm guessing at this point about twenty-nine thousand. So the rest, there won't be too much difference at the end. The leases are paid. So when you look in that little box, the little box at the bottom, it shows we're going to have five million, two hundred and eighty-six extra, okay? But of that extra, FICA, Medicare, pension and benefits is five point oh oh one of it. Like I said, those funds go back to the city. We don't get to spend those. So my projection is showing two hundred and eighty-five thousand that we'll have left in this budget at the end of the year. This is a conservative number in my mind, so I, I'm hoping it'll be a little bit better. But to guess, to your questions, Claffey, in June, this number will be closer to actual because I'll have two more months of information. And then we'll take a look and say, okay, so if we have two hundred thousand, are there some needs in the district that we want to spend that on? And then we'll have that month of June to spend it. We'll have to spend it and get the purchase order in that month. So what happens is, starting around now, people start reaching out to Dan and saying, hey, do you have any extra money? I want to do this, I want to do that. And, you know, some of the needs, it might come directly from superintendent or assistant superintendent. There's a curriculum need we'd like to have. It's, it didn't, it didn't get into next year's budget, but if we could do it now, or we'd like to ramp up and, and fill more classrooms sooner if you have a little extra money. So these discussions will take place over the next six weeks or so, and then in June, I'll bring forward any possible uses for this extra money, okay? So I'm, I'm building the list now. Some years it's huge, only so much, some years it isn't. And then there's also the, sort of the game that goes on with the city, and, and they'll be saying, hey, I need some money coming back, you know, we got to cover this, we got to cover that. So, you know, we're a department of the city, work with the city, you know? I look at them as corporate in the sense, I don't look at them as the enemy, I don't look at them as, most of the time. So, yeah, that, that's the process that we'll do at the end. So I, I've begun to start getting requests for things. Actually, one of the things I would love to use this, we just bought the new transportation software, and we didn't have that full amount in the budget, so I'd like to pay for the transportation software in June so that I don't have to try to figure out where to get it next year. So there's some things like that.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Just because we, we went through equipment, or furniture, where was furniture?
It's in the seventy-one hundred.
Yeah, does that include the, the new McCarthy furniture?
No, that's in the bond.
I, I have a question on the ninety, nineties. The, the last line, expense transfer to other funds, the two hundred and ninety-seven thousand that you think you're going to move in June, where are you going to be moving it to?
Okay, well, that, what that is, is in the budget, we budget a negative number, okay? Because that's actually income, and it's two pieces of income. We rent our facilities, so the rental fees that outside people pay, that comes back as a credit to our budget. We budgeted a negative one twenty. I think it's going to come back at a negative one forty, so we'll. And the other thing is the, the students that play sports, so they have a fee to play the sport if they're not, if they're introduced, whatever. You know, the athletic director spoke about that at her budget presentation. So those are those two line items. So when we budget, we budget negatives in the operating budget. The money's collected in a different account and I make the entry in June. So that's why I always just put it in June.
What about, um, any kids that are out of district that come in for like the Brentwood program, where would that money be shown on the budget?
That's not in this budget, that's in a special revenue fund budget.
Okay, I see. All right. And that would be used for?
That'll be used for special ed expenses and things. So for example, this year, there's probably five or six at least students now in Brentwood from out of district.
Yeah.
They, they want, so they've gone from eighteen to about twenty-eight students. They want to add a coordinator for the Brentwood program to help because it's getting larger. So those funds that are coming in and put in the special revenue fund, that's where we'll charge that person.
Okay.
So if they continue to grow and do it, they'll cover those costs easily. And if they start losing them, then maybe they don't need the person and then we can just. But so far, so good. We finally got some traction in that. I mean, we kept moving it in different rental places. Finally, it has a home that it's going to stay in for a long time, so.
Oh, I, I know that, I know that Mr. Alexander talked about this in the budget meeting, but I wasn't there, unfortunately, and I haven't watched it yet. Is there room to grow that program larger or is it pretty much capped at twenty-eight?
No, I think, well, I, I'm guessing you could get it up to thirty-eight or forty. I, I'd like him to answer that question.
Okay. Thirty-eight or forty sounds like a bad idea.
Well, it depends on the students, I guess. I mean, they have plenty of space. I mean, from a space point of view, yes.
Yeah.
From the student point of view, that's really an answer for a question for him.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, you guys have any other questions?
I just, this is going to be painful for me to, according to my estimate, your projected is about, the accuracy is about ninety-nine point eight-three percent. I don't know if you've, you know what I mean, when I look at the different?
Yep.
That's, that's not bad.
Well, it's an estimate. Let's see how it turns out.
Well, I'm saying, though, as much as it pains me, that's a pretty, I mean, when you thought it was a hundred and sixty-seven million, is that the number I should have used or one seventy? When I look at, I just took the.
Yeah, one seventy, well, one seventy-three is the total budget.
Okay, so I should, it's actually ninety-nine points. Points, it's, that's pretty darn.
That's not just. That's not just a convenience, that's talent.
Pretty...
I couldn't estimate that close for anything.
Well, that's the fun part, you estimate it, and see how close you get.
Yeah.
And as long as you don't mess it up, spend too much, you're okay.
Yeah, that's really close.
Yeah, could be.
Well, no questions, I'm just, a, a couple comments. Like, like I said, it is very detailed. I, I really like that, and to see, you know, like October spends this much, or December spends that much, I really like that. I, I was wondering about the grant writer. Where, could we use that money for, that's going to be left over for that?
Well, you can't use leftover money for a position for next year, because the cost for the person for next year is going to be in next year's budget. What you need to spend, any extra money that we have at the end here, we need to spend it on something that we can, usually we do it for things that we purchase, and then we can keep them. It's, you can't really use it for people.
It, it is very detailed, it is very tight. I thank you for all your time and effort on this.
You need to take that?
I don't know why my, oh, my alarm starts waking me up for last night's board meeting, I think.
Is it during the meeting?
Yeah, I don't know. Yes, please.
No, I think what I just did sort of expl, explains that transfer report, so that reports are in there, because typically they're required, but, so we can move to the last item, the transfer report. So since we didn't have a meeting last month, this is two months of transfers, these are the last two months of transfers. So what you're going to start to see, and I'll just run through these pretty quick, but you're going to start to see this month, and then the next couple months, the schools spending down their funds. So they budgeted them, you know, over a year ago in certain accounts, now they're getting towards the end, they say, oh, I have some extra money in this account, I want to spend it on something else. So that's what a lot of these transfers are, they have to do them for the purchase order to go through the system, they have to have the budget line in place. So the first one is Fairgrounds Middle School, they're just moving items from computer software and computer equipment to, to classroom supplies, and they'll buy certain supplies. The next one on the, behind it is the Brentwood School, and they're purchasing, they're moving it from miscellaneous to actual furniture and fixtures, they're purchasing some high-top tables for their, they call it their cafeteria, but it's just a general gathering space for their, for their kids. The next one is CTE Department, and they're just moving funding amongst the lines, like I mentioned, they've, actual spend versus what they'd like to spend the remainder. The one behind that is the Franklin Street preschool, and they're purchasing a new laminator. I don't know if they didn't have one, which is possible, most schools have one laminator. Elementary school teachers love laminators. I kind of like a nice laminated. I don't think it's great for the environment, but I like it. We don't have one in central office, I'd have to go to Ledge Street to do it. Okay, the next one is Broad Street, and they're going to be moving, I mean, it's interesting, they say, why, they're trying to get some material, so they can, they make the entry and they can get them. But they're just moving money amongst four or five different accounts down to supplies, and they're going to be buying some classroom equipment for the reading. The next one's also a career CTE at North, and it says right on the reasons, and the year transfers, so it's, it's exactly what they're doing, they're moving money around. Next one is the special ed department, well, actually, it's, yes. This is an entry I made, obviously it's significant, it's 500,000. We were talking before about these contracted services, so I'm taking it out of account 51100, which is labor, and I'm moving it down to 53628 contracted services. So this is the first entry in what I was talking about, there'll probably be another one for the same amount, maybe next one. That's exactly what that is.
What line would that show up on here?
That's on the 53628 line.
And you're pulling it out of 51100?
Right, which is the full-time wages. So if you think about it, these are staff that we don't have, so the money's sitting in, in labor, and we're paying contracted services.
Thanks.
The next one is Mount Pleasant Elementary, and they're just moving from supplies to computer equipment. Next one is Bicentennial, excuse me, they're moving between medical supplies and computer equipment. The one after that is district office. Now, what this is, is there was one of the grants moved some money around, okay? And when the grant was reviewed by the audit, they said, you weren't supposed to do that. So we couldn't get this money back from the grant, so the operating budget had to pick it up. Okay? We've had, I think, like I said, four audits on the grants in the last two and a half months, we're just about done. It looks like the only real cost is this one item. It's, it's, it's a cost typically would, was, we planned on charging it to the grant, but because of the process that we used, the state says you can no longer use that process, so we had to pay for it ourselves. So that's what this is. I took the money from the stipend accounts, which is one of the labor accounts, there's a little extra money there, and that's going to pay, and it's in computer software, because it's, it's software. And this is all related to the, when you get a grant, some of the grant money has to be shared with the non-public schools in the city. So what we gave to the non-publics was not the right amount, so the calculation that was done was done incorrectly, because it's a new calculation. Okay? So that's the, to be honest, so it was, it was, they had already purchased it, so we couldn't tell them, oh, don't purchase it, they had already purchased it, so we basically had to pay for it in this budget. Okay, the next one, Bicentennial, is again just moving money from conferences to supplies, so they can spend it by the end of the year. The CTE group again, year transfers. And the last one is Brentwood, again, they're buying chairs to go with the tables from the other entry. Why they didn't put them on the same entry, I don't know, but that's what I do. Those are the transfers.
Okay, we have to make a motion to accept those, right?
Yes.
Do you have the order?
I move that we approve the FY '24 February, March transfer report.
A second. Oh, yeah, sorry. And so now we vote? Um, all right, yes. Ms. Daniel Williams?
Yes.
Okay, so we're accepted, and I think we're all done. Just in time, thank you.
Move that we adjourn?
Okay, yes, adjourn, please.
So Mr. Don...
We have to vote aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 5:48.